Good evening, everyone. Do I have a motion to start the meeting?
Take a motion.
I'm moved.
Okay, moved and second?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call. Jan?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Here.
Lee? Are you all ready? Jay?
Yes.
Wow, did I miss anyone?
Yes.
Kathy?
Kathy, I missed Kathy. There you go.
Kathy's there, yeah?
Lindsay, but she's not here.
I'm here.
Okay, we have a special guest for this meeting from our friends at the Bartholomew. Welcome.
Yes.
Patterson.
I should be. I'm moving.
Yes. Chuck, are you able to share your screen?
Uh, I will give it a shot.
Okay. Oh, good.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, again, welcome Chuck.
Thank you.
We're glad you could make it. Probably a smart move not showing up in person with all the snow, even though most of it is washed away by now.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate you allowing me to go on Zoom. I had my eye exam the other day, and he told me the reason why I can't see very good at night, I have a cataract, so.
Yikes.
Dude, I can't see. I can't see. So, my wife will not allow me to drive at night.
So, having taken care of, and then you'll be able to drive, but it'll be all sparkling.
That's what they say. They say you can see better, right?
I only wish that was true. Cataracts don't correct night vision.
They say it does. So, I keep driving at night.
So, well, thank you for allowing me to do this. I am Chuck Patterson, and I am the Senior Vice President of Bartholomew Company. It's, I think, the first time I have been on a Zoom with you guys since probably when we opened the account way back when. Quick history, I used to be, I've been at Bartholomew Company for 22 years, and I used to be the town treasurer in the town of Shrewsbury. So, I know what you guys go through as far as, you know, the requirements of a city, town, and library. So, I know you have a full agenda, so I'll go right to the first page, and then I'll click to the next one. And how we manage this account is under what we call, here in the Commonwealth, the Massachusetts List of Legal Investments, the legal list. When we get into that, the actual securities, I will talk about what has just transpired about the prudent investor statute that the governor signed in August. So, the, how the account is currently being managed is using the stocks that are on the legalist, and we have about 21%. So, when you look at the pie charts on the top, you see on the top left, this is as of the close of the end of the calendar year. Then we have bond funds, corporate bonds, government agencies, and some money in the money market account. You go down to the lower section, you know, and please, if you have a question, just, you know, chime in, and otherwise, I'll just ramble through. So, the current yield on the account is 3.22% versus at the end of the fiscal year, it was 2.86. So, as you can see, what sections in the assets, how much you're making on each of those. Then you go down here, and you see your original contribution was 127,000. You've taken some money out, about $9,000. I hear, everybody okay?
Yeah.
I'm just catching feedback, that's all. All right. I am echoing.
No, no, it's, it's one of our trustees. Kathy, I think it might be you.
I'm sorry, Dashi, mine keeps popping up. I join audio by computer, and when I do, it blocks it, so.
Okay, keep on the phone then. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I don't hear the re, I don't hear rebounding back now, so.
Chuck, can I just ask a question if we?
Sure.
So, you said the end of the year, our percentage distribution rate was 2.86. I see it the other way, that it's 3.22, and in June, it was 3.8, uh, 2.86.
You said fiscal year, so.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year is two.
Yep. So, one is a fiscal year, and one is the calendar year.
I see now. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. So, then now on this page, it goes from inception on the left-hand side. We opened the account in August 2017 through 12/31/23. And on the right-hand side, because you guys do run a fiscal year, this is so far this fiscal year, so starting 7/1/23 out through 12/31. You started with $125,000 in contributions, made some withdrawals, you had gains. So, it says 12B1 credits. What happened, the broker dealer made an error. And it, they gave you the money back. They, they took it away, and they never should, so it's, it's there. We don't get 12B1 fees, and that was the error. You'll see that our management fees were $4,300 since inception. And so far, this fiscal year, the fees are $311. So, the total return, time weighted return since inception is 1.52%. And I'll show you some other numbers. It's, it's the makeup of the, the legalist. We do not manage this account for it to grow. We might in the future, and that's what my conversation will be. So, as you can see, you're in the chart, you started with $120,000. You took some money out, but it's nice to see that the blue line is the market value, and you're well above where you started. Next page, I apologize, that's blank. There's a computer glitch in the system and all that. Sure.
This is 12B1.
Say again?
On the list, there's a category list, 12B1.
Yes.
That they made the mistake.
That's on that, that's on the. Which the.
So, the broker dealer had made a mistake.
Okay.
And then they took it away, and then they give it back to you. They should never have taken away. You, you do not pay 12B1 fees on anything that we own here, so unfortunately, it's going to always show up. We're trying to get it scrubbed, but, you know, it's, you know, it was there, it was done, and for history purposes, it has to stay by the regulations. So, here's a chart that's new to you guys. I really like it because it tells how you're doing. So, on the fixed income side only, you have made 5.27%. So, you gotta remember fixed income, you end up buying something, you get the, you get the money back. It doesn't really grow. So, you, your yield to maturity is 5.27. Your coupons, you know, what it rarely says on the CD or the treasury or the agency is 3.02. So, huh, well, what's going on there? If you look over to the left on that slide, you'll see the par values were $60,000. Okay, market value is 57,000, call it 58,000, and the cost is 60,474. So, we paid a little bit more for them. What we try to do is buy things at discounts, and I'll show you where that happens. Back over onto the right side, you see average duration. You gotta remember what has been happening here in, in the world where the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates. So, in a rising interest rate environment, you want to keep your duration short, so that way that you can ladder up. And then we believe, depending on the pundits, that they're going to freeze, which they have the last two times, and then between who you're listening to, they could lower interest rates between three and six times in 24. So, what we will now do is say, okay, the bonds that we have, we want to hold on to longer, so you're going to extend duration. Then when you look on the same information, this is for the auditors, because they want to know at whatever level, so it's purely there for the auditors, but it's the same information you saw on the other. Then, how did you perform? It's really, really, really hard to compare the legalist to anything, but because of the way it's made up. So, here's your 1.52. If you only own bonds in the account, you would have made 1.4. So, because you put that 20% stock in, you, you did better, and clearly, we know what just happened with inflation. So, in this account, at the way it's made up, just like all the other ones, it's very, very, very difficult for the towns and the libraries to beat inflation. Okay, so that's what that 3.72 is. Okay, for that 20% stock, you made 6.8% on. So, that's the number way up in the upper right-hand corner. A lot of other information's there, but the number that pertains to, you know, okay, you know, how did we do on the stock, you made 6.8%. And then here's a cool slide where it shows you the performance of the account and how bad things were last in '22, and really, how good things were in '23. So, when you look at the account in '22, it was down 2.59. Bonds were down 3.69. CPI was up to seven. Short-term bonds were at 1.52. Longer bonds were down 5.61. The stock market, meaning the Dow, was down almost seven. And that's the best comparison of your account, because you only own dividend-paying stocks. And then the world stock markets were down over 14%. Turn the year, in '23, your account was up over four, and going all the way over to the various indexes where, you know, bonds were up 4.61, the Dow was up 16%. But, you know, the account's done what all the, all of these accounts do. Now you get into your account. Here is all the stocks, except for two that you, as a library, falling under the Mass General laws, you own all but two. You do not own Wells Fargo. And the reason why we don't own Wells Fargo is because you guys did not need to have a member or a taxpayer come in. Why do you own them? They're a bad bank. So, we didn't want to have you guys have those conversations. And then we took away GE. Well, you, you run this money or have this money to be spent, and you need dividends. GE was not offering dividends, so as a result, we don't use that. This leads to my conversation about, about the prudent investor statute. What that means is now, with the governor signing, and mass collective treasurers have been pushing this statute for 10, 15, 20 years. All it means is that you no longer have to stay on the list, and you can buy anything. You can buy anything, anything that's out there in the world, as long as someone looking at the portfolio would say, and a similar knowledge would determine that's prudent. So, what that means is now, if you wanted, you can go out and buy Amazon. You can go out and buy Microsoft. You can go out and buy Google. Not only can you buy it on the stock side, but now where I have the section right here in the corporate bond side, you are also limited to only companies that are on the legalist. So, we have accounts up in Maine, and it was so cool seeing that they owned a Microsoft bond, and they owned an Apple bond. Unfortunately, you can't. So, not only by going prudent, you can pick up diversification on the stock side, but you can also pick it up on the fixed income or bond side. So, then what we own here are all corporate bonds that are on the legalist. And then what you see in, on the accounting reports that you've seen, that you may have seen some red on your accounting reports on the right-hand side. And then where that comes in is right where I'm circling. We bought, like I said earlier, we bought some bonds that were paid a $509.11 premium. But if we were to sell the bonds today, we would get this column here. Because the interest rates over here, they can get higher bonds out there on the street. But at maturity, you're going to get this column. So, that is on paper what we call an unrealized loss. You go down here to the Fed, Fed Home, Federal Home Loan Bank. We bought this one at a discount. It has an unrealized loss. So, then at maturity, you're going to get that. If you remember that I talked about yield to maturity earlier. Okay, that's how we manage this account. We manage this account so that we do not go out and just buy the best coupon that we can find. We may not want to. We may want to buy a bond that has this coupon, because the yield to maturity will pay you more money. So, if we buy something at a discount, say, under, like in this case here, at $10 short of par, that's income to you. So, that will show up on your accounting report as a realized gain. So, we manage this account today for income. If we, we've been now because of this opportunity. Sure. Do you have a question?
No, you were frozen for a bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, we, we are managing this account today for income, because that's how you spend your money. Down the road, we couldn't do this with the legalist, because when you look at the legalist, you couldn't diversify this enough. If you look at it, how many drug companies are on there?
Frozen.
A quarter of the account are drug company, are drug companies.
It might be us.
So, what would have happened if something didn't go right with the COVID vaccine? And that's not a political statement. You would have lost a fair amount of money. It wasn't diversified. So, now if we can diversify the account, then we don't have to buy dividend-paying stocks. And then what we do is we help you guys act and feel like an endowment. So, then now, instead of only spending the income every year, we can sit there with you and say, all right, we're going to take 20 rolling quarters, five years, and say, what's the average growth that we're going to pick up on this? And now you're spending. Versus just cash. And what it does is it stabilizes the money you will get or spend to support the library. So, those are discussions that we're starting to have. This happened on August 8. And we're having the discussions with all our treasurers, all our committees. On the town side, they have their trust funds, but it doesn't come into play on the stabilization, which we all know about. They can't go prudent on stable. And they can't go prudent on CPA, Community Preservation, if you guys have that. So, I can, that's my presentation. I'll gladly answer any questions. I hope I didn't take too long, and answer whatever you got.
I have a slightly technical question.
Sure.
What's, what's the rules? Are there any different rules for CDs? Because I noticed you got a weird one on the State Bank of India.
Yeah, okay. So, first of all, great question. All those CDs are out of New York, as it says here. They all carry FDIC. So, that means, in this case here, it's only $5,000. So, there's FDIC insurance of up to $250,000. So, we will never buy anything that will exceed the $250,000. So, if you remember when, we didn't own any of the banks that failed last year, but if we did, we would have only had up to $250,000. So, then that way, there, there's your, there's your guarantee. We want to make sure that this money is safe and that there's a guarantee. So, State Bank is actually registered out of New York, and it does carry the FDIC insurance.
Are you in the process of putting together some sort of recommendation for our stock portfolio?
If you say that you would like to do that, we are having discussions internally on how we're going to go about that. We, we've gone back and forth where we could sit there, and you don't want to be a stock picker. So, we would probably use index funds to cover the, the stock allocation, and then buy individual bonds. So, we'd buy like the S&amp;P 500 index. That way, there brings you the diversification that we need. Then it's going to pick up the magnificent, magnificent, magnificent seven, in which we all want to have some sort of exposure to, and unfortunately, we can't. So, if you say, yes, we'd like to go down that route, we would then have a follow-up meeting to say, okay, here's what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. Now, there is a requirement for you. Okay, how cities and towns got to be prudent in the past, they would take it to town meeting. Town meeting would vote in the affirmative, and then your state senator, state legislature, state senator or state rep would then take it into Boston. You'd then have the Langley Adams prudent investor rule. Well, what the state has done is taken step two away, because they've already done it. So, then now all you have to do is your authority, since you are totally, you're totally independent from the town, right?
Yes.
So, I would assume, I would defer to counsel. And I can send you out the actual article that you can use, that you wouldn't vote at your board meeting. And then once you do that, then we go. So, there's actual positive motion and vote that has to happen at the entity level to go down that path.
What prompted that question for me was the fact that you hit upon the fact that we're heavily skewed to pharmaceuticals.
Yep.
That's probably a point for change.
Yep. As a matter of fact, I was talking to the legislative agent for the Mass Collective Treasurers and mass bankers through this whole thing, and he made the comment, well, the legalist has always been safer. And I said, safer than what? And I said, the broader market. And then I said exactly what I said to you guys. And then he looked at me and says, oh, that's not safe. So, you are correct in saying that we can make this account even safer by diversifying better.
So, Mr. Patterson, my name's Kathleen Purrier. I, I do have a question. We're all open to individual stocks, but not mutual funds. Is that correct?
No, that, that could be the other option. So, we could, we, in, in the case of the stocks, we might buy the S&amp;P 500 index fund.
So, that would be indexed to mid-cap, indexed to small-cap, indexed to large-cap?
It would be their fund, the S&amp;P 500. So, what you can buy yourself, we would buy, but it's a passive investment. So, we would buy that, and we buy it as an institution, so your charges are much lower, which are all eaten up by return. It's all inside the return, and everything that we give you here is net of any fees. So, it'd be net of, currently, you have three bond funds here. So, you have the Franklin Short Duration Government Bond. You have the one-to-three Treasury Bond, iShares, and the three-to-seven year. So, we are very mindful of fees. So that.
I understand. I just had one follow-up on that. Say, we, we took the top-performing, eight top-performing mutual funds, such as the Fidelity, Contra, Funda, something along those lines, and you picked, you picked the top stocks, top-performing stocks within that fund. Would that be a doable option?
We are talking about that now.
Consistently top performing. I'm talking about one of the oldest mutual funds in existence today, and if that would be a doable option?
We are talking about that now on how these accounts are being made up. There were six towns that have jumped into special town meetings to get going on this. So, we are working with them to come up with a viable, good diversified plan.
But we're not going to Berkshire Hathaway, and it would be, it would be diversified.
I'm sorry?
It would not go into Berkshire Hathaway, which is a wonderful fund, but it would be diversified.
It would be totally diversified, unlike it is today. So, and, and that's what we're working on today. But if the town said, hey, listen, you know, can we just buy Amazon or what, you know, a certain, as you can see, we don't. When you look here, the percentage, it is very well diversified. Okay, we don't, we don't want to put, as they say, all your eggs in one basket. But if there was a town, I, I mean, a particular company, say, if there was a company in, you know, in town that you guys, you know, just felt right about, we can do that. Right now, there is on the legalist, you don't have to worry about ESG. But there have been some towns that said they don't want anything to do with McDonald's, and, or they don't want anything to do with Bank of America. So, it's your account. We will make the recommendations, but if you say, hey, listen, I wouldn't mind owning a bit of this. There's a city up in your area that has chosen to do that, and we do. We do. And then, you know, if you, they say, or you say, I want to buy, I'm just saying, Amazon as an example, and we're going to have the asset allocation of what it is, and 60% is going to be stock, and we have 5% in Amazon, and then the rest are spread out. So, it's going to, you know, change. We recommend changing it to the prudent investor. But it, it's not something you have to rush to. It's something you can talk about, think about, but we are ready to go tomorrow if you said, let's go. And what I would do is I would have Kathleen. Kathleen couldn't make it tonight. She had another meeting. So, I would have had Kathleen on the call with me, and then that way there, she can give you the actual information. Okay, we researched this, researched this, and that's. And that's what we have found on how we want to make this a fully diversified account. The other one point, right now, you have a twenty percent equity, eighty percent in bonds. Okay, and we do that once again, because you don't want to have sixty percent of this account in twenty stocks. So when you get it more diversified, we might want to change that asset allocation. It might, you know, go fifty fifty. But you're going to have it fully diversified. It might go sixty forty. So those are the next conversations that we have. Today, this account's working the way they are working. But whereas you now have this opportunity to diversify and make it a real endowment. Might not be a bad idea.
So are you suggesting that we come up with the companies we want to invest in? Because I feel that's not really our. You would do it. You would say, these are the, yes.
It's, it's totally, it's totally our job. All you're going to say is, yes, we want to go prudent. Here's our vote. And two, we want to go sixty forty equity to bonds. And then we will then.
Right, okay, thank you. I just didn't want it to be everyone doing their own stock buying.
No, 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 that's. We, we get paid, we get paid to do that. No, you don't have to worry. Let's see if I can get out of this. I'm not going to hit the button.
I think in today's climate, it, it's fiscally irresponsible to be in the allocation that we have now. I think it's been fiscally irresponsible for a while. And I certainly would move to at the very minimum of fifty fifty. That would be the start to get the feet wet.
And I'll give you one more tidbit to your point right there. There was a court case. It was Woodward School versus the City of Quincy. They were both the beneficiaries of the oldest trust fund in the country, the Adams Family Trust. Years ago, the treasurers chose not to invest the money. They left it in money markets accounts. So since they were beneficiaries, they were needing the money to run the school. And they were not making enough to run the school. They proceeded to sue the city. To your end of what you were commenting on. They sued the city and for the purpose of saying that they were not getting the income that was needed and by poor investment selections. The court found for the Woodward School to the tune of four million dollars. The city appealed and was then found and lost the appeal. And the court added another two. So the city had to pay over to the Woodward School six million dollars in lost investment opportunity. I tell that because if you have people that have given the library money or town money. And now they're sitting there saying, we've all been able to just point to the legalist. Well, now you have this other opportunity here to fully diversify the account. And you should. So I agree with you. My firm agrees with you.
Thank you.
Reminds me of the story from the Bible of a good servant who buried the money in the ground. Can I make a proposal? I think what, from my perspective, we would like from Bartholomew is a, a recommendation and feel as to, one, the split bond or stocks, whether it's fifty fifty, thirty, seventy, whatever. Allocation, low risk, high risk, medium risk. And then return dividend and appreciation. So I think that would be like a complete evaluation so that we have some tidbits to choose from.
Okay, I can do that. I can have my team do it. So what I'll do is I'll in the if you give me a week, I'll have the team work something up. I'll also send over to you, there was KP Law had put out to all the treasurers that have their clients and it's been circulated out in our world. We, I've been, I'd say plagiarized, but we copy. It's a public document that actually gives you the wording of your motion that you'll have, like I move to amend chapter forty-four, fifty-four to allow prudent investor. Section two oh three C. So I'll send that along also. But I'll talk to the team and we can get a recommendation out to you sometime next week.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
That's not a change. It's just a. That's exciting.
Do this for years, so we're very happy they have done it.
Oh, that's, that list has been a nightmare since day one. Yes, and, and never could it be changed. It was carved in granite. I think that the allocation will be probably mixed between tasty and, and more aggressive and most aggressive, I would think.
Yeah, I'll let my team put that together. Because I know they have been working on something already for other towns. So we'll come up with a good recommendation and then maybe join you for your next meeting or two. And then we can talk about it. And then if you choose to go forward, it's a good thing. What we'd end up doing is I would defer to my team. Because we don't want to sell things at losses. So it may not be a wholesale. Okay, sell this, buy that. And, and again, it would all be with the intent of doing whatever is best for the library. Okay, super. Well, thank you very much for your time. Nice meeting everyone. And hopefully I can have Kathleen drive and I could come up and see you guys in person. All right, have a good night, guys.
Can we put this on the next agenda for next meeting? Or if even Bob, if, if it comes in quickly, perhaps call a special meeting, a one item meeting.
Well, let's, let's see what it looks like, because it might be rather complicated.
How long, how long, I mean, how in how far in advance do we have to have this ready to go for town meeting? It does. It has to be approved at town meeting.
No, we have this money.
No, no, no. Going from the legal list to the prudent list has to be approved by town meeting.
It's already been approved by the governor.
But there's no legal list anymore.
But it doesn't, I, I thought he just said you had to take it to town meeting. That's what the wording is all about.
But it's not an approval form. This is what we're doing in accordance.
Yeah, but we have to, that has to be, it has to be, it has to go before town meeting. That's what he said.
You know what, Mary Lou, Mary Lou, could you contact him and just clarify that?
Yeah, okay.
Why don't, why don't we hold off until we get something, to know what we're going to do? Because I don't envision us coming in with something that Bartholomew sends us next week and say, here, we want you to affect these change tomorrow.
They're not going to affect them tomorrow. They, they said if things aren't ready or back to par, then they would hold off on that portion of it. We need to move on this. We've been absolutely lackadaisical on these funds for a long, long time. It is fiscal irresponsibility.
Well, to my opinion, we're not in a position today to say we're going to do this or that. So.
No, we have to see what they come up with.
That's what they're coming up with. And the other thing is, you're recording this, correct? This meeting's recorded, so we can.
He might have said something or exact answer earlier. So we can watch it back.
We can, we can watch it and see, you know, he did say something like that. I, I don't know. I didn't. I thought he said certain, certain towns do have it connected where the town folds the first strings of. And we said, no. So, yeah, like if, I believe if the town who also has to, has been going by the list. Their accounts, they would have to come forward to town meeting and ask if it's okay, I think.
Yeah, but one of the points here, there's no such thing as a list anymore.
Right. Oh, no, that's what I'm saying. So if they decide to change and diversify and all that, I think that may, that money may have to, or that.
The legal list still exists. You just can choose not to stay on it. But it's still there. It hasn't gone away.
But it has no legal force.
Yes, it does. This is just a, this is a change that has to be made. But if the legal list is still there.
I still, I still say, Mary Lou is the treasurer. It's her responsibility. And she's willing to contact him and clarify that. And that's what should happen.
But let's wait until we get Bartholomew's report. Let's wait till we get the verbiage from Bartholomew. And then we'll know. Fine, go ahead. We'll talk to the city hall.
What was the question, Bob?
No, I think he.
I'm just saying, Mary Lou, go ahead and contact town hall.
Yeah, and just get a clarification on that. That's her responsibility. That's her responsibility.
So Mary Lou, what clarification are you going to ask for?
I, I mean, I, I'm just going to say, I understood it had to, the, the change from the legal list to the prudent list is something that has to come before town meeting. That was my understanding. But apparently, I, nobody else agrees with that. So I heard it wrong, but I'll clarify it with him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if there are any questions.
And that's not a board decision. That's your responsibility to do that.
Yeah, okay. Dan, all right.
Mary Lou? Yeah, no, I, I heard him say that also about town meeting, but I, I don't have the greatest connection. So, but then he did say something about the second step doesn't have to be done because, and it sounded like, you know, it'd already been voted by the legislature. So I'm confused too. So I think.
I think it's great to do, yeah.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Oh, no problem. That's easy. I get a. The thing is, I will even get an email tonight and do it. You know, I'll pick it up tomorrow when he gets in the office. Okay. No problem.
Okay, done. Minutes? Anyone have any questions on the minutes?
I'm sorry, I never got the minutes. I'm going to have to, I'm not going to be able to, you know.
I sent them out again today.
That's what, that's what Darcy said. I, I, I guess I missed it, Laurel.
I don't, I, I don't have them. The next day after our last meeting, I sent them out, because we're on that secretary anymore. It's not like on my calendar, send them out a week before. And I'm like, oh, I sent them out, but maybe everyone lost them in email. I could send them to you now.
Except that I can't read it. I, I don't think I can read them now that I'm on Zoom. I'm just saying, I won't be able to vote on them. But, you know. Yeah, but I don't, I won't mind having a copy of them.
Okay, I'll send them.
Thank you.
Colin and Mary Lou, has anyone else had a chance to read the minutes? Any questions? You need a motion to.
They appear to be in order. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Jan?
Hi.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
I have to abstain.
I'm staying, okay. Nancy?
Do I need to abstain where I wasn't at the last meeting?
Okay, Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, minutes were.
Just as a side note, Laurel, your email did not go to Mary Lou. She's not on the list of people who got it.
Really? She's not on the board list?
I, I, I don't know. Just something to keep in mind. She wasn't in this.
There we go. I'm sorry. Your name somehow did not get on.
That clarified some things.
Thought I had checked my email just before I got on.
I am so sorry. I don't know how to update off the group list. Thank you.
Hey, Mary Lou, you're back up again.
I know, yeah. I sent both reports, the, the monthly, the monthly report and the, the quarterly accounting report of the trust funds. And he referenced these in his report with the, you know, the red thing, the, the the red column there, the unrealized gains and losses. But, yeah, that, did everybody get those? Yeah, I don't really have anything else. If you have any questions, I'll try my best.
Thank you, Mary Lou, for sending all that out.
Yeah, well, you know, if, if you keep them and you, you know, you can do. I'm trying to be organized here and putting things where they're supposed to go.
No questions on the treasurer's report? Want to vote for approval? Motion to approve?
I move.
Second? All those in favor? Jan?
Uh, yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Next up is director's report.
Okay, I tried to keep it pretty short and sweet, keep it kind of painless, because I knew we had the Bartholomew presentation beforehand. So are there any questions about the CERC statistics? They're pretty standard. Though you can see, like, a lot of it did go up from last year's, which, which is great. Some of them are very on par, but some of them are, did definitely increase. Yes, and then I concluded our programming numbers, standout programming. Thank you, Lee, for bringing his friend Santa Claus to the library for the kids.
Oh, my God, did I love.
Meeting your friend Santa.
I said, I loved those pictures. They were great.
I have one question. Where was Lee when Santa Claus was there? I thought he brought him.
I don't know. I've never seen them both in the same room.
Think we need an investigation.
The totals for the programming last month were very good. So those, any questions about those numbers? Okay, warrants. So twenty-four, twenty-three was three thousand thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Twenty-four, twenty-five was three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. The total was six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. There's that. There's that. Um, so, a few days ago, I didn't have a flooring carpet update, but, but I did hear today that now we're looking, they're looking at, it's probably gonna be done the last week of March. Um, so, that's some, some update for you. The bids, I think, are going to be done March, starting March first. If I'm remembering correctly.
See bids?
Floor, well, the carpeting.
But you said bids?
Yes. Yeah, I think the um, the movers themselves, they're uh, on the state bid list, so that's, that's why they don't really have to bid that, but the, the carpeting bids, they have to.
I, I just saw a notice a couple days ago that there's a small town in western Massachusetts, Sandpointon, I think it is. Very small town, has a very small library. They're replacing their carpet.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna close for two weeks.
Two weeks?
And they have a whole, they have a whole scenario of where people can drop off their books, what place to go to. And I think that's maybe something.
Yeah.
Put the paper.
Put something together.
Yeah, two weeks. And they're doing carpet tiles too, so I don't know why two weeks would be.
I don't.
I'm not gonna question it.
Maybe they don't have the movers.
Well, maybe they've got two people working in the library.
Yeah, I, maybe, maybe I'll look more into that. What was Sam?
Sandpointon. I'll, I'll pick out.
Okay, yeah, cuz.
Way out west.
Like, if I look at their website, I can probably figure out if it's comparable to us.
I have a question. I mean, it's not really carpeting, but it is. So.
Okay.
How with all this rain, how did you deal with leaks this time? Because I know you've had.
There was a standard leak in the foyer, um, a few weeks ago.
But not this last, like, last night?
No, actually, we came in and it seemed okay. Uh, Steve had been here earlier. Um, so, he might have taken care of something, but there were no buckets in the vestibule or anything, and usually when there's a leak, there's buckets. So, I, I took that as a good sign.
Okay, so, I mean, they're going to put new carpeting down, and yet, we still have a leak.
Yeah, I know that with the roofing itself, I know they're planning to do the vestibule before they do anything else, so. Um, knock on wood, that's within the next few fiscal years. Not that this is good, but you know what I mean. Um, so, good question. I just included some funding requests, and you can see a little bit more detail in the report that, that Bergen submitted for the board, which is very good, very detailed, and also. If you do her survey, I think she'd really appreciate that.
Okay, I was wondering if we could.
Yes, and I think she also wanted me to tell you that she is, she attended a uh, training today for um, doing programming for neurodiverse patrons, and I think she's gonna work some story times for that into the programming. Um, so that, that seems like it'll be great. Um, oh, and she mentioned the sink on here. The sink got installed today. That, it was a very fast, um, Steve contacted them, they contacted him later in the day and said, we're coming tomorrow. And now it's there. So if anybody wants to go look at the sink afterwards, who, anyone who's here, it's there.
What a huge difference when you have Town Hall that works with you instead of against you. It's, it's wonderful.
They've been doing great. They've been working very well. Um, so, yeah, she's just requesting some um, funding for a children's program that previously we got for free, but the second time around, they want us to pay, and it was very well attended, and patrons have been requesting it, so. I, I think it's very fair. Um.
Are you looking for a motion on that, Darcy?
Uh, yes, if anybody wants to make a motion for funding.
I make a motion to approve out of, out of state aid, the funding for the program that Bergen has presented.
It's RoboThink.
RoboThink, four hundred and fifty dollars. I make a, I'm gonna get that.
I make a second.
Okay. Time for the vote. All those in favor? Jan?
Hi.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
And she's gotten to the two other science guys to come free again.
Yeah, yeah.
That really.
Dr. Bus is one of our patrons, I believe, so, yeah, um, but he, he also knows. And also Dawn. Dawn is also one of our patrons, so. Yeah.
Oh, he was a former science teacher.
Yeah.
The Italian.
They're both our, both of these people are patrons, but it's, it's been good because we've had a lot of good resources from our patrons, which, you know, we're also on task.
Professor Dawn.
Yeah, yes, I know. So, yes, very good report. No, I think that's, no, Bus's last name.
Just Bus?
Yes. One of our patrons, though. I often see their name.
Bergen has two soft requests, for my, for my interpretation. Uh, she's saying she's, their program is, is limiting, limited for early childhood, elementary teens and teens. And with the five hundred, five hundred forty dollar budget, it's difficult, as most professional programs cost two twenty-five. I, I think she's looking for some additional funding, and I don't know if we want to consider that in, in advance. And while I'm saying that, she's also talking about the Groveland Cultural Council's funding for summer programs, which is sort of a short range, short range, long, uh, 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 approach. Uh, I think I would feel comfortable if we let Bergen know, we would consider, you know, funding some of this money in advance. Because she might not have, she's handling that.
We can't really fund it in advance of knowing what they are.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, uh, you know, we would approve up to such and such amount for this program. She's given approximate cost.
Right.
She's going in now saying she can't do it because she has no money.
Um, so, my, my thought is, first of all, maybe um, Darcy knows this. Do you know when the Groveland Cultural Council votes on their money?
This month.
This month.
In fact, it might happen this week.
Meeting, if she got that grant.
We would know.
And if not, we will, we can come, she can come and say, we need the, I need the two thousand. And it's obvious we have to do the summer program. I mean, that's. But yeah, my other question was, and I can't remember, and I'm not gonna go looking all over, you can answer this really quickly. Was her program allotment for the next year up, or is it stayed there?
So, the program budget line is like, just a little over one thousand dollars. And I, I split it between adult and youth. And then I come here and, you know, request the two fifty for RoboThink and, you know.
Right.
Um, so, I think,
I, I think what you're saying is to let Bergen know that, yes, come to us and ask. I mean, we're not gonna give her, you know. You know, no, it's gonna be program by program.
Yeah, I think we need to wait to see what the cultural council does.
Right, for that. And then the other would be, yes, we will support her. That doesn't mean all the time, maybe, if she comes towards us, I want this program, it's twelve hundred dollars, and this man comes and shows us snakes. No, we can get a way to do that.
We take each, each, each request individually.
Right. Talk, talk it along. She put this in writing because she's looking for feedback from us.
Yes, yes.
And we've given her that feedback before, that she can always come to us, uh, with requests that she has that can't be funded from other areas, but it's done on an individual basis, not just, yeah, we have all that money and you can have, no, we don't have all that money. So, I think we should continue doing it the way we're doing it, but we should make no decisions before the cultural council uh, comes back with their decision.
Right.
But I, I think, I think that uh, it'd be appropriate for Darcy to do one alone with her and say, the board really supports you, so don't worry about that.
Yeah.
And the same with Sue.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Sue has been, I mean, her programs, very fortunate to go hand in hand with a lot of the other libraries, so it doesn't cost, you know, which is great, and her, her has increased.
Yes.
So, we're, we're lucky in that, but, you know, I, I hope they know that that's kind of what this state aid money can be used for.
Yeah.
Use it or lose it, and um, yeah.
Yeah, I will be, I'll talk to them.
It doesn't have to only be books.
Exactly.
But not, yeah, and, but to know that not everything will be approved, and things might have to wait. But it's good to apply for other grants, and it's good to apply for, especially the cultural council grant that's in town, and um, we're there to help.
And I know the cultural council, council itself is looking for people. There aren't a lot of people that apply for this money.
Which is really surprising, because it's just.
Yeah, it is very surprising.
How to do it, but.
Yeah.
You know, so, go for it.
It's a great resource. They should.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this, this, sorry, um, does Bergen have these surveys printed out?
They're on the back here. You can, like.
So I'd have to print it out?
Yeah, and then just maybe fill it out, give it to her.
I didn't know she had them like on her desk or something.
I don't think. I don't think there are extra copies, but.
It might help to put a stack of them on the desk and some in the children's room.
Mm-hmm.
Is, and how is she, is she's giving them out to people, like, when they attend a program?
These, these might be specifically for you.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I got thought too. Specifically for us.
Yeah, that's the thing. There, there's been a youth services survey on the, the, the front desk and, and her desk for ages, and this is.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Alright, so I, I will.
Yeah, the baby city program's taking place?
It has started, yes. It started yesterday.
Excellent.
It's um, there's, there's ten slots. They're all filled. Everyone showed up yesterday.
Wonderful.
Great things, great things. There's three more, I believe. Um.
No, I'm glad she found that, because, no, I was trying to help her find.
I know.
They were very expensive, um.
Um, yes, so thank you for that. And then the copier contract renewal is five twenty-six. Just as a um, reminder, the, the contract covers ink, because it's, which is good, because ink is ridiculously expensive. It also, our copier this fall, a couple months ago, broke down, and they came, fixed it. We didn't have to pay anything extra. There, there were parts that had to get replaced, and it just came back. You know, all normal. Um, so I think it's, it's worth it to have this one-time cost, because to be fair, ink cartridges are like a hundred dollars a pop, and we definitely go through more of those in a year than five. Um.
So, let's see.
We need to make, you mean, you need a motion on that, Darcy?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I make a motion to fund the uh, request from the director out of the state aid fund.
Second?
Second.
Let's see, mine's again, five twenty-six.
Five twenty-six.
All those in favor? Jan?
Hi.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you. I think that's all I have, because I told you about the sink, so. Remember to go look at the sink. Alright.
Okay, next up is the director's goals report.
Oh, yeah, so basically, we had to decide whether um, the goals that I had listed should be for the fiscal year or the calendar year, or was it for this year or next year? Um, yeah, cuz I know I sent a report to everybody. And we just um, didn't know where to put it on the evaluation. Um.
Did you remind me, the evaluation, fiscal year or calendar year?
The evaluation is, uh, it is calendar year, but it's before the calendar year ends.
Right, yeah.
Um, so, it should be this calendar year.
Before you renew your contract, which is in June, isn't it?
Okay.
July?
Should be a fiscal year.
Yeah, so it'd be July first, so I should write new ones for July first for the fiscal year.
I would think so.
I could do that, and that could be what we do going forward, and.
Because I think we said like six months, like.
Yeah, and it's good, then I, I keep track of them.
We, we put down things, the work coming out in time. You decide the contract. Darcy, you've done none of this, so you know what? Or, you know. I'm just saying, no, this is, so that we're not doing it all at one time.
Yeah, and, so we keep on top of it, too.
On top of it, like, this is.
Six months better.
You're doing, you have a couple of months there to, you know, and then make new goals going forward, I would think.
Yeah.
Maybe at the time of signing your contract, these are the goals they have this coming year?
Yeah, so, probably it will be signed at the June meeting.
Right.
So, at the June meeting, we can talk about a new set of goals.
Does that make sense?
Excellent, great.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's totally a good idea.
Kind of like, everything, well, we haven't evaluated her, and how can we evaluate?
Yeah, it gets a little confusing, but I think that's a great idea. Alright.
Sort of tied in with the goals. One of the things on the goals was uh, community outreach and all that. And I noticed on the council of aging, Matt did a program, two programs.
Yes.
Now.
I did one too.
Excellent.
We're, we're already doing that, but I'm more thinking in Matt's case. Does he get a honorarium or stipend?
Oh, he, so.
It's outside the libraries, with um.
Well, with the um, assistance, I give them, in addition to processing and the desk and stuff, I give them specific assignments. Matt is, he's the tech guy, so he does tech appointments. Um, and I mean, it was really a town thing.
But I mean, it was just held there for, I'm saying aging, it could have been held here.
That's true.
Yeah, it's just, it's out.
Oh, no, no, what I mean for the.
The special one, yeah, special one.
Yeah.
Like, he was going out of his way on his own time to do this, or, yeah.
And there are follow-ups with appointments here after.
And just like, Darcy has done things up at Daisy Park, that's out of the library, but it's been a.
Yeah.
Her program, she does Skyping.
Another version of tech time, which is one of our things that we offer.
At the library.
There's no budget for stipends or honorariums.
Which is great.
Oh, and the library is also getting face time outside of the library, by Darcy being the chair of the council.
I'm not the chair. I can't be the chair, I'm.
Which I think that.
That'd be terrifying, to be the chair.
The vice chair.
The vice chair.
Oh, no, no, no. As much, if any of you are watching.
You're just doing the vice chair. Every day.
Okay, so we're good on goals.
We're good on goals. I think we figured out a, a schedule.
So, can you just? What were the goals again that you, we decided on? It was, one of, was the Gupta collection, right?
Yes, so I have been
And what was?
Working with Bill on them. It's just because the holidays just happened, and he had stuff going on. He's gonna contact me like next week. Um.
So, I just needed a refresher. I just wanted a refresher, I'm sorry, cuz I'm not, I'm not home, so.
Oh.
I remembered that was one goal, but I couldn't remember what the second one was.
Oh.
That were.
Looking at the strategic plan.
Which I do have going, um.
Those are the two that we came up with.
Yes, so, uh, anybody who's on my focus group, which I think here, it's only Bob, but they'll be getting an email probably tomorrow about, we're going to have a meeting. Um, about, like, a focus group meeting and cut, doing all of our, our SOAR activities.
People outside, like, like, who else is, like.
Uh.
There's people that are gonna be.
We, I recruited a bunch of, um. We, I recruited a bunch of, um, volunteers and people connected to volunteers, I, um, Rebecca's on it, Jason Naves is on it. Uh, um, staff member, I tried to get a bunch of.
With someone from the staff.
Yeah, I also, Lindsay from this board is on it, but I also recruited CJ, because a teenage voice was very um, recommended, so, um. I know. Um, so, we're moving along, and I had, um, also, I met with, uh, Michelle from MLS yesterday, who is the consultant who will be running the focus group meeting, so she, it was a productive meeting, and it'll, I think it'll be fun for everybody who attends.
Do you have a rough date?
I think March fifth.
Oh, wow, I know.
Yeah, keep it clear. Keep it clear, March fifth, after the library closes. That's a Tuesday.
Oh, not in the morning, though. Oh, okay.
No, it's like, gonna be five thirty, I think.
Oh, that's good.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, next up is a reminder from Beth about the, uh, year-end campaign financial report. For those people who haven't filled it out, uh, for those people who are retired and don't work, it's literally a, a blank form.
Well, it's, it's just, it's always been, because we never, we're not putting signs on things like this. So, but I said, are you sure we have to do it? We don't, yeah, you have to do it, whether you made money, you know, put money out or not, so it's just, just sign your name to it, and it's gonna be yearly from now on.
You, you were the first one to sign it, Laurel, and then I was the second one to sign it. No, the town clerk was the first one to sign it. You were the second, and I was the third.
Well, hey, when Deb tells me to do something, I go right now.
It's a formality which the sticklers on, uh.
I think I went in the next day after our last meeting to do it.
I probably went in ready for you.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
So, yeah, but please, yeah, please have her do it, because that, that's, I hate going and, um, tracking people down. Oh, did she, did you sign it yet, Bob?
No.
Oh, well, because you also want to do your, it's either your ethics or something else.
I've done that.
There's one thing that would.
Oh, no, no.
Since I talked with them.
Uh, when did you talk to them?
Since whenever we found out that we had to sign this, this paper.
It was signed.
And she said Bob is, has not done it yet, I'm like.
Oh, I understand that.
Clerk's office to sign?
Yes, yeah. Um, so, and I think they're still open on Mondays, but only till seven, like, you have to go in and eat.
I think so.
I think it's only till seven.
But it's still a good time.
Okay.
Okay, any other items from the agenda?
Uh, a reminder that, uh, if you are for reelection this year, the paperwork will be available on January eighteenth.
And who is up for election?
Besides me, I'm not sure who the other two are. Mary Lou, I think, is Mary Lou, no?
I tell, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, okay, and who's the other one?
Uh, I'll look up, wait, no, look up in the.
It's Jan.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah.
Speaking of elections, uh, Bergen gave me a list of, I think, three people that she thought might be interested in joining the board of trustees. And I've yet to, to get back to her, but there are three people that are very active, the children here, and also in, in town. So it looks like we have some good prospects.
Nice, that was great.
These are three people with young children, so.
Do you feel comfortable contacting you?
I do, I do, but I like someone else with the same.
I might know them, that's what I'm saying. If you have the names, it may be people I know, it's just.
I'll, I'll talk to Bergen.
Away with getting people to do things they don't want to do.
Yeah, I wanna go.
That's why Lee's here.
I'll talk to Bergen, so we don't.
But, uh, yeah. That would be good.
I don't think we have any on, on the outside on the call, so. Have a motion to adjourn?
I had one thing before we, I had one question, uh, actually for Darcy. Darcy, how far ahead of the meetings do you and the chairman get together to put the agenda, to fix the agenda?
We haven't been doing that, um.
Oh, that's how, you don't, you don't do it together?
No.
To be truthful, the, uh, there's a fixed format for the items we talk about all the time, and then there's the add-ons, which I look for feedback. Like, so we wanna add the, uh, Bartholomew for next month. Anyone has anything they wanna add to the agenda, send me an email.
Oh, okay, cuz I thought it was the, I, I was misunderstanding then. I thought the director and the chair collaborated, that's how it was always done, on the agenda.
No.
I never did it that way.
Yeah, I, I, oh, I'm surprised, because that's how it's always been done, um. Okay, I just wanted to know, because if I can't reach you, then, and I wanted something in the agenda that I could talk to Darcy about it.
Oh, that's not a problem.
Way back, way, way, way back, um, before Darcy, when I was secretary, I was the one that made up the agenda, the chairperson didn't even care. It was just the, the set format.
I think we, we need to really look at, we really need to look at that.
Yeah, um, we're gonna see if there's anything in our.
Yeah, I think maybe.
I know on the board of selection, they do.
Right.
We haven't seen a, a call for agenda items email.
No, we don't, yeah, that used to.
So maybe that would be good before putting the agenda together, maybe that, cuz I know Lee's.
Right. If anybody has something, I think you did that always, Lee, didn't you?
That would be, I think, helpful for everybody.
Yes.
That, and I'll CC Darcy on the agenda before it goes out the room.
Good, and then if she has anything to add or subtract, then, you know, there's nothing to add, that, that would be good.
Actually, it does say in our bylaws, just looked it up.
Yeah.
It's chairperson, along with the director, prepares and distributes the agenda to all board members, calls special members of the special leading support, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's how it's supposed to be done.
I think, I think what happened was during the pandemic.
Right.
I was contacted by email, so.
Yeah.
Good to clear that up.
Yeah, I think as long as we have that communication going.
Right.
Be good.
Okay, I'm waiting for a motion to adjourn.
I moved, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we can't adjourn until I get my checklist. Lee?
Yes.
Jan?
Yep.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
All right, I'm gonna stop recording.[1796.04]